The board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Boyd. Thirteen present, you have four.
A quorum being present, we will be led in prayer by Bishop Watts of El Bethel Church of God and Christ.
Thank you so much. Let us bow our heads for a word of prayer. Paul's writing to Timothy says in verse Timothy two, "I exhort therefore that first of all supplications, prayers, intercessions, and giving thanks be made for all men, for kings, and for all that are in authority, that we may lead a quiet and peaceable life in all godliness and honesty; for this is good and acceptable in the sight of God, our Savior." Father God, in Jesus' name, we thank you today for this privilege and honor to stand in this august place. We thank you for your guidance, for you told us in everything to give thanks, for it is the will of God concerning you in Christ Jesus. So we thank you for these great men and women that are here to do the business of our city. I pray for our President, Megan Green. I pray for our mayor. I pray for our comptroller. I pray that you will continue to guide us and lead us. You told us in all our ways to acknowledge you, and you shall direct our path. Every ward, every alderwoman, every alderman, touch and touch their minds and touch their wards, touch the people in our cities, oh God, the issues that we face in our schools and in our neighborhoods and our churches, we need your direction. And so we thank you today for this time, and we pray, oh God, that you were blessed, that you would guide, and that your peace will abide. And the peace of God, which passes all understanding, shall keep your hearts and minds through Christ Jesus. We say all things in your name, in Jesus' name, and may we say amen.
We will dispense with line item four. Any introduction of honored guests? Any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the tenth.
Guess the weed attendance campaign up in the galley this morning.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Aldermen from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to introduce the Sheriff of the City of St. Louis and also Action St. Louis, who is here, been advocating for right to counsel. Thank you.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, June 2nd, 2023.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, June 2nd, 2023.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we approve the minutes from Friday, June 2nd, 2023. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in the Google Drive for all members to see. Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Development Disabilities Resource Commission, the appointment of Ms. Paige Colbert. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely to Sheriff O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the second, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment of Ms. Paige Colbert to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move we approve the mayor's appointment, Paige Colbert, to Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the second, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we approve the aforementioned appointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth. Second. The Alderman from the second yield to questions from the Alderwoman from the twelfth? Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Alderman, do you know how many people are on this board?
Alderwoman, I do not.
Okay, and where does Mrs. Paige Colbert live, do you know?
Alderman, Alderwoman, she is a...
Alderwoman.
Alderwoman, I corrected myself. Alderwoman, she is a constituent of the second ward. I don't have her hundred block, but I did review her resume and the paperwork that the mayor's officer amended to me.
The reason why I ask is, do you know how many nominations the mayor puts on this board? So I cannot support this, not because of the person, but because we have a law that says that if the mayor appoints more than three people, they have to be all over the city. They cannot be in just one spot, which is going on for fifteen, twenty years under former administrations, and I've brought this up over and over again. Nobody's ever said that law is illegal. So I really would ask you to send it to committee and get information about this, because I do really believe that when people such as the mayor ask you to sponsor things, they ought to support you by giving you the full accounting of this. That's our whole thing of vetting people. It's not just you looking over it. The whole point of the Board of Aldermen vetting people is that we make sure we're following all the laws that's in place. And so you may think it's a great thing, but then you might find out when you look at it, that it's four people all from the same part of the city, and that's really not legal. It doesn't give me a time to ask or any question, and the mayor's office often asks people to do that kind of thing, and that is wrong. I have a nominee sitting in committee right now, because they haven't given me any information. They asked me to do it, gave me nothing. Just said, will you do it? So I sent it to committee, where it will sit until they give me the full information. I would encourage other people to do that so that we all get a chance to vet these people. Otherwise, we're not doing our due diligence and our duty. If you don't want to do that, then I will have to vote no on this, not on the person, but on that we're not doing our due diligence.
I understand, and I respect that, Alderwoman. I did look over, this individual looks incredibly qualified. I do want to keep the gears of government moving and sort of respect that the mayor's office fully vetted this individual, so I am inclined to continue to move forward and renew my motion to approve.
Okay, and so when you say they vetted it, did they tell you for sure that there were people from other parts of the city on this board?
That was not discussed, no, Alderwoman.
Do you believe me when I say there is a law that says that it has to be if she appoints three? Because I will give it to you if you don't believe me.
I'm certainly inclined to believe you, Alderwoman.
So the mayor's, the one that the mayor's office sent to me does not fulfill that requirement. That's why I've been sitting there waiting for them to explain it to me, okay? So I don't know why you have such a belief in them, because they have not done what they were supposed to do, and that's why I don't have belief, because she's basically reappointing a lot of people that used to be under the Slay administration, and the Slay administration for fifteen years, followed by the Crusen who did listen, was not his tone deaf. When we raised the issue, did scramble and try to make it different, just appointed people that were south of Page. So that meant people like me, who live north of Page, had no opportunity. That's unequal opportunity. And one of these days, you guys, this city's going to get sued about doing that, because we do have an equal protection clause. So when you express that full faith, then to me, if you didn't ask that question of how many people on this committee, and does it fulfill that requirement, then you haven't done your due diligence either. And I'm going to ask for a roll call, and I'm going to be voting no.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the Alderman from the second, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we approve the mayor's appointment to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwa... Thank you. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Keys. Twelve aye votes. I'm sorry, Alderwoman Boyd. Twelve aye votes, one no vote, and one voted present.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to approve Ms. Paige Colbert to the Developmental Disabilities Resource Commission.
Dear members of the board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the 2019 Grand Center Community Improvement District, the appointment of Ms. Jessica Whitaker. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment, sincerely to Sheriff O. Jones, Mayor.
Is the Alderwoman from the eleventh here still? Yes. Jay is grabbing her, okay. We could grab the Alderwoman from the eleventh. She has an appointment as well. Alderwoman from the eleventh, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment of Jessica Whitaker to the 2019 Grand Center Community Improvement District.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I apologize for my delay in getting back here. I hear that I have been charged with three demerits. We shall process that later. So with this appointment, I would ask that we move forward with the appointment of Jessica. I'm sorry.
Do you like to make a motion?
Jessica Whitaker.
Do you like to make a motion?
Make a motion, please. Thank you.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we approve Jessica Whitaker to the 2019 Grand Center Community Improvement District. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Dear members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the eleventh would yield?
Would the Alderwoman from the eleven yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth?
Absolutely. I will yield to the Alderwoman from the twelve.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you so much. I really just want to make a statement to you. This is very different than the other one, which is a citywide appointment. This is an appointment for a certain section, and I am not opposing that on that very reason. If it were a citywide, I would be doing the same thing with you, my good friend, as anybody else, because, and if we don't stand up for those of us who live north of Page, we already know nobody else will. They don't care. They just care about what happens to what they want. So I'm just, the reason I'm not opposing it is because it's not the same thing. Just wanted to make that.
And I appreciate that. Thank you so much, Alderwoman.
Thank you. I have no further inquiries. Thank you.
Thank you.
I rise to support this nomination. We had said many years before that we would send citywide nominations to committee to make sure that they were vetted properly. We seem to move away from that. When we have small community districts, it makes... That is the way that's supposed to be done. It's supposed to be vetted for the people that's right there in the immediate area, who represents the area, but it is not supposed to be done when it is citywide. If we're not making sure people are included citywide, then shame on all of us who thinks that's okay. And one of these days, when you're in that seat and your community is not being included, please don't call on me to support you, because I won't. Don't come to me and talk to me when it's okay for you to think that it's okay for us to be discriminated against.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eleventh, seconded by the Alderwoman from the seventh, that we approve the appointment of Jessica Whitaker to the 2019 Grand Center Community Improvement District. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Point of order.
Please state your point of order.
And it's a point of inquiry. Did we remove the requirement about signs up in the gallery? Or are we now not doing that anymore? Because I thought that people were not allowed to bring these things in, and maybe it changed over time.
I believe that as long as it's not disruptive to the meeting, that it is allowed.
That is not my understanding, but I will look for it in our rules. Thank you.
All right, please dispense with line item eight. Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Does anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 62 for first reading.
Thank you, Madam President and members of the board. I move to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 62.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by, I could not hear who, Alderwoman, or Alderman from the ninth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 62. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Thirteen aye votes and one voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the Alderwoman from the first. Please place Board Bill Number 62 on the first reading calendar. Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill 63 for first reading.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we suspend the rules for the purpose of introducing Board Bill Number 63.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 63. Is there any discussion?
No, I just want to point out, we've got some work to do on the formatting of this bill. This is a pay bill for the Circuit Attorney's Office, and recognizing that it's not an ideal form. I want to thank the clerk for getting this before us here this morning, but just to recognize, we have a little work to do, but we want to leave some breathing room for our new circuit attorney. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I don't know if this is a proper moment to do it, but I want it to be added as a co-sponsor of the bill.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. It's been moved by the Alderman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we suspend the rules to introduce Board Bill Number 63. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. I'm sorry. Voting. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Valmer. Alderwoman Velasquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green. Alderwoman Keys. Fourteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of suspending the rules for the purposes of introducing Board Bill Number 63. Madam Clerk, please place it on the first reading of board bills.
So noted.
First reading of board bills.
Board Bill 50, introduced by Alderwoman Tyus. An ordinance, an ordinance to repeal ordinance number 71514 relating to the appointment of rates of compensation of certain employees of the License Collector of the City of St. Louis and enacted in lieu thereof, a new ordinance dealing with the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 51, introduced by Alderman Con and President Green. An ordinance relating, I'm sorry, an ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.660, revised statutes of Missouri, as adopted by the voters of the City of St. Louis on August 2nd, 1994, pursuant to ordinance number 63168, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax in the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 1, appropriating $12,506,000 from the said sales tax for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes and containing the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 52, introduced by Alderman Con and President Green. An ordinance pertaining to the transit sales tax imposed pursuant to Section 94.661, revised statutes of Missouri, as adopted by voters of the City of St. Louis on November 4th, 1997, pursuant to ordinance number 64111, creating the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund, directing the Treasurer of the City of St. Louis to deposit funds received pursuant to said sales tax into the City Public Transit Sales Tax Trust Fund Account 2, appropriating $12,506,000 from the said sales tax for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, to the Bi-State Development Agency for certain purposes and containing the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 53, introduced by Alderman Con and President Green. An ordinance appropriating the sum of $24,088,000 as described in Section 94.600 through 94.655, revised statutes of Missouri 2000, as amended for the period of July 1st, 2023, through June 30th, 2024, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes and containing the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 54, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance relating to the position, classification, and salaries of the employees in the Parking Division, repealing ordinance number 71551, and enacted in lieu thereof, certain new sections relating to the same subject matter containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June 18th, 2023. Board Bill 55, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance relating to the position, classification, and salaries of employees in the Treasurer's Office, repealing ordinance number 71550, and enacted in lieu thereof, certain new sections relating to the same subject matter and containing an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective June 18th, 2023. Board Bill 56, introduced by Alderman Orion. An ordinance requiring the municipal court to assess a $7 surcharge for state court automation in addition to any court costs assessed by the court in cases in which costs are assessed. Board Bill 57, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance relating to the appointment of salaries in certain employees in the Sheriff's Office pursuant to Section 57.530, revised statutes of Missouri, by repealing ordinance number 71509, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. Board Bill 58, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance to repeal ordinance number 69056 concerning the city's participation in the Property Assessment Clean Energy Act, and enacting a new ordinance regarding the same to enable the city to join the Missouri Clean Energy District in order to provide an additional authorized entity through which owners of property within the city may obtain financing for energy efficiency or renewable energy improvement to their property pursuant to Missouri's Property Assessment Clean Energy Act, and stating the steps to be taken by the city in connection wherewith and the activities such district may conduct in the city as a member of such district. Board Bill 59, introduced by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard and President Green. An ordinance relating to the establishment to a right to counsel program for tenants facing eviction or equivalent proceedings, the implementation, oversight, and annual reporting of this program, the provisions of legal representation for tenants under this program, and the disclosure of tenants of certain information pertaining to this program, including the severability and emergency clause. Board Bill 60, introduced by Alderman Orion and President Green. An ordinance pertaining to the excise laws of the City of St. Louis, repealing ordinance number 66271, 66227, 64643, 63129, 62656, 62940, 6244, and 61289, presently codified as Title 14 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, containing the severability, emergency, and penalty clauses. Board Bill Number 61, the number was not used this session. Board Bill 62, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer and President Green. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Service of the City of St. Louis, establishing multiple public works and improvement projects on Sarah Street, Lindell Boulevard Bridge, Delmar Boulevard, Delmar Boulevard, and Louisiana Avenue within the City of St. Louis, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 63, introduced by Alderwoman Spencer and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the Circuit Attorney Office, including the compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment benefits, leave of absence, authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number 71515, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this bill shall be effective June of 2023. That's the extent of first reading of board bills.
Reference to committee of board bills. Alderwoman from the first, are you wanting to be recognized? Alderwoman from the first, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to be added to a co-sponsor, as a co-sponsor to Board Bill 59, the tenant's right to counsel.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Reference to committee. Oh, we have some more over here. Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President. I would also like to be added as a co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the ninth.
You can sign me up for that as well. Please add me as a co-sponsor.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Joining on and adding me as a co-sponsor to the Right to Counsel Tenant Bill.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
A reference to committee.
The Budget and Public Employee Committee, Board Bills 50, 54, 55, 57, and 63. To the Transportation and Commerce Committee, Board Bill 51, 52, and 53. To the Public Safety Committee, Board Bill 56. To HUD's Committee, Board Bill 58, and 59. And to the Red Tape Committee, Special Committee, Board Bill 60. I'm sorry, Madam President, and you said 62 was assigned to which committee?
To the Public Utilities and Infrastructure Committee.
To the Public Utility, I'm sorry, to the Public Infrastructure and Public Utilities Committee.
I said it backwards, committee.
That board bill will be assigned to, I'm sorry, it will be assigned to Board Bill 62.
Correct.
That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading and report to standing committees.
The following board bills were reported out of the Budget and Public Employees Committee. Board Bill 47, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer and President Green. An ordinance to regulate employer and employee working relationships between the City of St. Louis and all employees under the classified service, including a compensation plan, terms and conditions of employment benefits, and leave of absence, authorization for a deferred compensation plan, repealing ordinance number 71512, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the pay period in which the ordinance is approved by the mayor. Board Bill 46, introduced by Alderwoman Switzer. An ordinance relating to the appointment of and salaries of certain employees in the Collector's Revenues Office pursuant to Section 82.610, revised statutes of Missouri, by repealing ordinance number 71508, allocating certain other employees to agree with rate, including an emergency clause. The provisions of the section contained in this ordinance shall be effective with the start of the first pay period following approval by the mayor. The following board bill was reported out of HUD with the due pass recommendation. Board Bill 28, introduced by Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance recommended by the Board of Estimants and Apportionment, authorizing and directing the mayor and the comptroller of the City of St. Louis on behalf of the city to enter into an executive agreement or agreements with the United US Department of Housing and Urban Development for the receipt of choice neighborhood implementation supplemental grant funding, appropriating the sum of $5 million, containing an emergency clause.
clause. The following board bill was reported out of Public Infrastructure and Utilities Committee. Board Bill forty-nine Committee Sub sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer and Alderman Browning. An ordinance pertaining to the water rates finding, determining, and declaring that increase in certain water rates is necessary for certain purposes defined in certain terms repealing ordinance number six eight six nine four and a part of ordinance number six three one three six with an emergency provision. That's the extent of second reading report of standing committees.
Please dispense with line item fifteen. Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill thirty-five introduced by Alderwoman Switzer and Alderman Odenberg. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on May tenth twenty twenty-three to change the zoning of property as indicated on the district map from A, Single Family Dwelling District to F, Neighborhood Commercial District, and the G, Local Commercial and Office District to G, Local Commercial and Office District in City Block five six five three containing an emergency clause. Board Bill thirty-six introduced by Alderwoman Switzer and Alderman Odenberg. An ordinance recommended by the Planning Commission on May tenth twenty twenty-three to amend the boundaries of the Bevo Mill Area Special Use District as indicated on the maps shown in amended exhibits A and B so as to include the remaining portions of parcel five six five three dash nine dash two two zero point zero zero one as described in section one below and City Block five six five three point zero zero to amend the boundaries of the bowtie sub area of the Bevo S U D to include these same portions of parcel five six five three dash nine dash two two zero point zero zero one and containing an emergency clause. That is the extent of board bills for perfection consent calendar.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you're recognized on the motion to adopt the perfection consent calendar.
Bless you. Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the first, that we adopt the perfection consent calendar. Any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg. Alder, Alderman Conne.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Ald, Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Conne.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the tenth to adopt the perfection consent calendar. We can dispense with line item number sixteen B. Report of engrossment.
Board Bill ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Third reading and final passage of board bill's consent.
Board Bill ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
Madam President.
Yes.
I am, am I recognized to speak?
Yes, you are recognized.
I requested Board Bill eleven be removed from the third reading and final passage of board bill's consent and put on the regular calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Third reading and final passage of board bill's consent calendar. Trying to get to the end of it here. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we third read and finally pass all the board bills on the consent calendar. Board bill consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt the third reading and final passage of board bill's consent calendar. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Conne.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sonier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Fifteen aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion to adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill eleven sponsored by Alderman Conne and Alderman Orion. An ordinance recommended and approved by the Airport Commission, the Board of Public Service, and the Board of Estimant and Apportionment authorizing a fifth amendment to the ordinance number six five one six three containing the severability clause.
Alderman from the third, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill eleven.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we finally pass, the third read and finally pass Board Bill eleven.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill eleven. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the second, third?
Third.
Third, would yield?
Would the Alderman from the third yield questioning from the Alderwoman from the twelfth?
I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, I see that you amended this bill because the airport is buying five, what are they, electric shuttles, is that correct?
I, I'm pulling up the board bill, Alderwoman, if you could give me a moment. She probably realized we had several bills related to the airport that have come through.
Well, I can tell you, it says that, which is a great thing for me, okay? If you look on the page two, it says you're going to buy five electric shuttles.
So the idea behind this, if I recall correctly, is that, that is not the correct board bill eleven.
Well, let me ask my question so you'll know. So I'm supportive of that. I just have a question about it.
Sure.
Okay. So my question was, so this was, this is amending an old ordinance, and I was just trying to, when I was here as the twentieth ward, I was trying to find out why we needed to even amend it to buy the shuttle. I know we had to add more money, but I think it's a great thing. I hope we, at one point, go to all electric shuttles instead of gas. I just didn't know why we had to amend to add that we, what we were buying. I thought that this covered whatever kind of development such as that at the airport. So that was just my question. I knew we had to amend amount because we increased the amount to cover for the shuttles.
Yeah, I think that would have been, I, I'm not familiar with all of the successor board bills to the, because it does reference several board bills, not just one, but, you know, it would have been for the appropriation of the funds.
Okay, okay. So, but just for clarity, you just said what you were buying, is that it? Or what the airport was purchasing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I have no further questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the Alderman from the third, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number eleven. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Conne.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sonier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browney.
Aye.
Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich.
Aye.
And President Green.
Aye.
Fifteen aye votes.
Reported finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, seventeen, eighteen, nineteen, and twenty.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature heretofore to the end that these may become law. First reading resolutions in reference to committees.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item twenty. Second reading of resolutions.
We have none.
Dispense with line item twenty-one. Courtesy resolutions. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the courtesy resolution
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt our courtesy resolutions calendar.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt the courtesy resolution calendar. Any discussion? Alderwoman from the first.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we make resolution number thirty-six honoring Pride Month in the city of St. Louis and Bank.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we pass resolution number thirty-six in Bank. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Said it's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adopt the courtesy resolution calendar. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
Can dispense with line item twenty-three. Announcements.
Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, Budget and Public Employees will have a hearing in the Kennedy Room at nine thirty. Also Wednesday, June fourteenth, twenty twenty-three, the HUDs will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at one P M. Public Infrastructure will have, I'm sorry, Public Infrastructure and the Utilities Committee will have a hearing in the Kennedy Room at three thirty P M. And Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, full board meeting in the chambers at ten A M.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the tenth.
I didn't, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I didn't know that there was a budget hearing on Wednesday, so I would like to change that HUD's meeting back to Tuesday for Board Bill thirty-seven, please.
Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Madam President. I would like to call a Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting for Tuesday, June twentieth, I believe it is. Yes, Tuesday, June twentieth at nine A M.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the ninth.
I'd just like to invite everybody in the city to the Central West End Cocktail Party. That's tomorrow at five P M. between McPherson and Maryland on Euclid. We're going to have cocktails, obviously, but also fire dancers and just a really good time. So please come out, enjoy it. It's supposed to be a nice evening. We'd love to see you there.
Alderman from the fifth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. This Sunday, come down to Shaw School at Mackland and Botanical, and we have the St. Louis J.C.'s Annual Silk Box Derby. At noon, the police chief and fire chief will be racing. I believe the fire chief has won the past few years. We're going to have a new chief who's a little lighter, maybe he'll move a little faster this year. Thank you.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would like to invite the board out today from four to nine P M. on Washington and Thirteenth Street. There, the street is blocked off. It will be live music, food, drinks, cocktails, since everyone loves those, but it's just a moment for everyone to be able to come out, have a good time. The street will be blocked off to be able to celebrate in downtown area. So thank you.
Great. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Do you have another announcement?
Yes.
Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. A couple of announcements. First, on Saturday, we will be kicking off Juneteenth festivities in the East Loop in the Tenth Ward at the corner of Delmar and Hamilton. It's always an amazing event. It starts at twelve o'clock, and I know we have a lot of events coming up as well, but this is the first one kicking off in the area, in the Tenth Ward. And then also, I want to speak about this being the twentieth anniversary of the tragedy that happened with Christian Ferguson. Christian Taylor Ferguson went missing twenty years ago, and it was first shared with the community at the corner of Page and Skinker. And so today, they're going to have a press conference at that same corner, not only celebrating his life and honoring his memory, but also starting efforts that I hope that all of my colleagues will join me in, in a medical alert called the CTF Medical Alert, similar to the Amber Alerts and the Silver Alerts and the Blue Alerts that we already have in place now. This one will be a medical alert because people, especially the family of Christian Ferguson knew that within so many hours of him going missing, the tragedy would happen that we ended up seeing. So we are pushing the effort to now enter into the books a medical alert for families. Hopefully, no mother will have to be in the same shoes that theater was in then and still now. And so again, there's a five thirty press conference today, and then on Sunday at Forest Park in front of the Wells Perfor Vigil. They'll also be having a celebration in honor of Christian Ferguson. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? I just want to follow up on a few things that are in your email box and, and a couple more that are going to be in your email box soon. Proposed timeline for hiring of LAs went out. Please be sure to file with the clerk. The folks that you intend to interview know later than June fifteenth. Charter commission applications were sent to the board earlier this week. Please remember to file your selections with the clerk no later than June seventeenth. And later today, look for an email with youth council applications and deadlines for choosing your youth council nominees so we can get the, the youth council up and running as Right. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. All members were present today.
Good job, everyone. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you. I move that we adjourn until Friday, June twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Thursday.
Thursday.
Thursday, June, June fifteenth.
Okay. I was thinking that was too long from now, but I didn't see it on the calendar in the memo. So it's Thursday, June eighteenth.
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth. Thank you. I move that we adjourn until Thursday, June fifteenth, twenty twenty-three in the chamber.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adjourn until Thursday, June fifteenth. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned.[1718.65]